Every company offers a benefit, I mean, what do you want to have working for you?
The government don't offer a benefit.
I worked for Acadian Ambulance for 12 years, which is not a benefit.
It's not the government, not the Fed. Give it in, just give it in.
Right, but so does every other school board in the state of Louisiana, so.
Most companies give so many hours.
Yeah.
Perfect job.
Oh, with what company, you only got two weeks to pitch. They're lost. So if they want to go further into kind of give us different recommendations, I'd appreciate that. The other one I had brought up was the, by the index pay. One thing that we, to see if it's a benefit to go with a straight salary and cut out the index pay, because what happened last, again, we had brought this up last month. The $2,400 that was taken from the supplement and given to the teachers and everybody, everybody got the $2,400 raise. But the index employees got an additional raise because they're based off of a teacher's salary. So they got, whereas the teachers didn't get that, that job. So what I'm trying to look at is to make it fair for everybody, just put everybody on a straight salary. Now, you can't reduce that person, let's say Mark Gavert is making $80,000. You can't, according to Mr. Boyd, he said you can't lower their salary, but you can stop, you know, come up with a different structure.
Mark, I never did understand, what is the index?
You see, I would have gone straight salary.
Yeah, I don't understand, I don't know that.
So, I mean, and it's been like that forever over here, from what I'm.
Yeah, several other districts use the same method, I guess it was just something commonly used, I don't know.
Yeah, it was before all of our time. Yeah, it was to give, he did every year.
It's to compensate the people that work more than nine months, for days and hours worked more than teachers, and also to compensate the difference in education levels and the skill or requirement of the position, so, I mean, that's the mentality behind it, but.
I just don't think that's right. Is it impossible to convert it to a salary, to get rid of the index?
No, it's not impossible to do that.
So maybe, you know, and again, this is the discussion today, so that's why I brought it up, because I didn't think it was fair that the teachers didn't get that, that little bonus.
Well, Mark, it's also the same thing as when you get percentage raises, so most of the time probably where UPS is, they do percentage raises. So when you are making 80,000 and you're making 40, they say 4%, so it's comparable to where you are, because it's a percentage of that. We make more than teachers, so doesn't it not make sense that as you grow your salaries, it's kind of the same thing?
I just want the teachers in the line of fire, and I'll, I'll go until I'm dead saying that. It's just, I find they should be entitled to the exact same raise that everyone, it should be.
I think that's the idea, because if it goes to salary, that means those principals at larger schools, they all get paid the same. So, in essence, you know, the principal get paid more than the principal at small schools, but they also have two additional assistant principals, while the smaller schools have.
But I think we have, I think we have a small.
I would be for that.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let me talk about schools.
That's been.
We have, we have a football game on Friday night. Brookridge, I mean, Sicilian State, we're gonna play. Those administrators are not gonna get home until 11 o'clock at night, maybe later. So i- it's not just about, okay, let's keep everybody on the same playing field, because there's a lot of work that goes into, several football games, basketball games, volleyball, track, we're hosting a regional track, the regional track meet in Sicily this year, that takes a lot of manpower and a lot of hours. I, I get it, I understand what y'all are saying, but you have got to walk in the shoes of the people that are doing these jobs to understand a lot of work. I have to, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but, but I have to use this example, because, I'm sorry, but everyone would come here and were attacking supervisors who wants administrators and who.
I attack supervisors? If you think I'm attacking?
No, I'm not saying we're attacking, I'm saying.
But you gotta watch the word you say.
But I'm saying who grinded at these various.
I understand what possibly can happen with salary.
I'm, but I'm just saying.
I'm gonna give you some bright ideas before it happens.
I'm talking about at the various schools that we're talking about, many of the supervisors that are sitting here who wants administrators at this school, and not one of them complained about the number of hours and the amount of work that they put in. But now that they're supervisors, it's, it's, it's people outside of this, this realm right here, who are talking about these people and saying that they're not putting any work. I'm not gonna, I'm not talking about myself, every morning I'm pulling duty at CCRC in the morning, I'm not asking anybody to give me a pat on the back or to applaud about that, that's part of what I signed up for. I'm not asking, I'm not taking pictures of that to post anywhere or anything, that's part of what I do, but there's a lot that people do that y'all don't see.
But Fred Young, okay. I'm just giving you some ideas what can happen with salary.
Yes, sir. Okay, let's move on to another time. Discuss a lean role for competition studies and budget cuts. Miss Beatle.
He's here.
Do you have a question? You have any questions?
Uh, yes, I have to eat and drink before, and I.
Not in four. I have a bullet.
Okay.
Is it okay? May I tell you just a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me some time this evening to discuss what we do for school systems across the southeast, and how we go, and how we might re-service to St. Martin Parish schools. My name is Byron Hedrick, I am the president and co-founder of Lean Rock. We have worked extensively across the southeast, a lot in Louisiana, helping districts do a few things, from strategic planning, to compensation studies and setting compensation for districts, to efficiency reviews, to organizational reviews. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing to help districts with efficiency across the state, and, and what those services look like. So, you're all looking to be good stewards, that's my questionable, all board members, and I would say all school leadership usually is trying to do the right thing for their communities and the right thing for their kids. The problem is right now that we're living in a world of challenges. We have rising costs, everything, inflation and tariffs, we have funding concerns, long-term concerns over what funding will be available and won't be available, and at the same time, we're just coming off of the Esser Cliff funding, which kind of spoils itself a little bit, so times are a little bit tougher right now than they were just a couple of years ago in education. We work with school systems to help them identify areas of waste. Now, when I say waste, I'm not talking about people, I'm talking about wasteful things that you're not really getting the value for that you're putting the money and the resources into. When we say waste, we're talking about things that you're expecting to receive, say, value A, but really, when it's all said and done, you're not getting them. So you're making investments that don't really have ROI. We help districts understand what those are, and how they can improve performance, and how they can better appropriate resources to drive the things that are most important to them. Which comes back to success for your students and success for your community. Right now in Louisiana, because of the Esser Cliff, the cost rising, and then of course the Department Ed increasing accountability measures, there's a lot of pressure in homeschools in Louisiana, and I'm seeing that with all my clients. And to be honest, if, now's the time to be addressing these things, because it's only going to get a little bit complex and complicated as time goes on. We try to look at people, processes, and technology, and what the right combination of those things are, so that we minimize the cost, yet increase the service level that we deliver to students and staff members and the community as a whole. We use a toolset called Lean Six Sigma to do that. It's kind of unique, it came out of manufacturing, it came out of healthcare, we've been applying it in education for over 17 years successfully. It's not, I'm not Elon Musk, I'm not going to dog the district, I don't come in and make crazy recommendations that did not look at what the value of those services are. What we look at, and we say this a lot, we want to work with the group, your team, to get them to understand and see what we're seeing, then get them to understand or learn how things could be done differently to drive that improvement, and then we work with the district to develop recommendations that can be implemented, and actually drive cost savings, or resource refocusing or restructuring to the district. Where I head, we don't come in and cut costs. I do get asked sometimes, actually in Livingston Parish, when I was doing interviews, I was asked by a more member, well, 80% of our cost is labor, what you gonna do? Well, that's true, most school systems, 75 to 80% is labor, but what school systems settle, will really pay attention to is that 20 to 25%. That's larger than most of your companies and your community. There's a lot of opportunity right there, and a lot of resources that we can work with without ever touching a person. We look at everything inside a school system when we do one of these comprehensive reviews. We start with instruction, because that's why you're here, that's the most important thing, is our, is our programs working? Are we resourcing those programs correctly? Are we getting the benefit of the resources we're putting into those programs? We look at finance, we don't look just as like an auditor would, we look at finance from a standpoint of, how do you process payroll? How many errors are you having? What could we do to speed that up or improve it, so we're not having to require the labor that we're putting into it? Our handling AP, it's at the process level that we dive to. We look at procurement activities, purchasing, we look at transportation, that means we look at your routes, we have to understand, are we efficient when it comes to rallying? We look at your HR processes. Today, I was in LaFouche Parish, working with them to optimize their own work process, to make it more clear, make it faster, and make it where everyone is on the same page. We work with nutrition, we're going to look at both your participation rates, we're going to look at your menu options, we're going to look at your flow in your lunchrooms, and we look at operations, and operations is a big name, that's, that's actually not just maintenance, that goes all the way to custodial care, it goes to landscape, grounds upkeep, and then of course, we look at technology. So basically, there's not really a function or a facet of a school system we're not going into when we make these looks. Again, though, we're not auditors, we're not coming in to catch someone doing something they're not supposed to, or tell them, hey, you, you're, you shouldn't be doing this, or, or hey, you should be doing this. What we're looking at is, are we making the right investments, and are our processes and systems set up to be as most efficient as possible? The way we do that is we gather a bunch of data, we do a bunch of analysis, and then we come on site and we work with your team members to walk through that data, to walk through their processes and systems, and to identify those areas of opportunity. Once we do that, we're going to come back and share that information, we're going to go back and do all the analysis, come back and say, okay, here's what we see as opportunities. We're going to come back to those same staff members, sit down with them and walk through, hey, here's the opportunities we're seeing, here's how we can address this opportunity. Typically, my grandfather used to say, there's more than one way to skin a cat. Once we find an issue, there's usually two or three different ways we can fix the problem. So we have to dial it in to what fits the school system, and then from there, we can write a detailed recommendation and an implementation plan that then can be presented to the board, superintendent will bow upon that typically, and help influence in the development of that, and then they, your team can be held accountable while implementing those challenges. It really is a process to drive improvement overall in areas of most concern within the district. What you get from it, you get clarity, because you understand really what's happening in the district. We're independent, we want the best for your community, we're not going to be really sure coding stuff, and we're not going to try to hide something from you that you need to know. And our process improvement, it works, we've been doing this for 17 years. We will give you a recommendations and an improvement plan that you can hold staff members accountable to achieving, to drive the improvement, and overall, we increase the stewardship given to the district by reducing costs and driving improvement in service levels. So, does this work? I mean, it sounds like smoke probably too, because it sounds like too true, but we have a really outstanding track record, I have plenty of references that we can give you that speaks to what we do. I just spoke to LaFouche, we identified $1.48 million in their operational budget, none of that was tied to people. It had to do with utilities and custodial supplies, a little mismanagement in how we're doing custodial supplies, which led all the way down to how we're running custodians, how we're not waxing floors, we get to that level. Livings, we found between $1 to $1.37 million in savings, both in overtime, transportation, and then other resource allocations inside the district that we can make. And then we saw another $1.49 million in increased funding from grants that the district would qualify for that wasn't going after, and also increasing participation in the nutrition program, so that it pays for itself versus it had to be prompted by the general fund. And then in EBR, we did about almost $3 million in savings, and that had to do with automating a bunch of processes, reducing duplication of software systems, amazing how much good profession can achieve, and consolidating locations, and improving treasury management practices. And again, you see that with other districts, there's several more, and we've worked with over 20 districts in Louisiana, we've worked with over 180 districts nationwide over the last 17 years, and, I'm not sure, why not say? You can see from the diversity in those findings and what we've done, we're all over the place, right? We're trying to dig in to find what's best for your district to make it run better, and achieve your goals for their students. That is all I have, but I will ask, let you guys ask me any questions.
Nice question, I never heard of any head naps you knocked off before, you know, as far as you see custodial supplies, different computer supplies.
If we see staff.
You never start from the top?
Well, we do restructure, it's more of an org review versus an efficiency review, where we look at the overall system and structure inside the district, how it runs, the leadership, and how it's driving accountability and driving really what you're trying to achieve, and we do make recommendations for how we switch that structure, improve that structure. Typically, if we do see where we're not, the organization is outsized or oversized for what it's doing, what you have to realize is in education right now, particularly in the southeast, we're seeing attrition rates of like 15% or higher in a lot of cases. I was just in LaFouche, they were at 17% attrition rate over the last three years, a little higher, rounding down to 17%. When you have 17% of your staff turning over, or you're 15% on an annual basis, that gives you an opportunity to review what's going on and make sure your structure, and change the structure, so that when, but some of those people leave, it may not be those people you have to replace, it may be other positions you're replacing, or in less of, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Well, this is, it's people.
Oh, sorry, I'm just following, so, usually, we started in Alabama, and in Alabama, every position inside a school district, even custodians, is tenured. So we, we, we're not necessarily want to come in and just cut all your, you know, just say, hey, cut 20% of your staff. We will look at those resources, and if we see where there's areas where, hey, I don't want to name a district in Louisiana, but I'll name a problem, one thing we saw is one district in Louisiana, they had drove their student, teacher ratios way down to around a little over 12 students per teacher, thinking they were going to drive up academic achievement. The problem was, when you went and looked, they had no improvements when they made those changes. When you started going deeper into looking, what we found was, first off, they couldn't hire all certified teachers, they had to hire uncertified teachers, and they did not put in any support systems for those teachers to help them with classroom management, to give them training, to make them better teachers. So they invested in headcount, right, but they didn't give any support to make sure that headcount was going to drive improvements. They just thought, well, we got the people, so it's going to happen. That's not what happened. What we ended up doing there is through attrition, we brought that ratio up slightly, but we also added some coaches, some literacy coaches, some math coaches, and we put in place a support system to help those teachers that were there to drive performance.
So it's possible, if you come in and do this, you may increase the amount of staff that's needed based on what you see?
If it's needed, if it's what you need, and it's the right investment for your district, it's not uncommon sometimes for us to do that, or to reallocate staff.
What is your cost base?
Our cost, it's just the time it takes, and we've been doing this long enough that I know what our rates are and the hours it's going to take based off the number of schools you have and the number of staff you have. Now, I will say, if you're considering my service and you're afraid about my cost, do an RFP, I'll beat it.
That's what I was going to say.
I win everyone I go after. I just won Biff County, Georgia, we were at 68,000, now that's a much bigger district than you guys, my closest competitor was 98,000, and the mean was 120. Most of the districts I know in Louisiana are in the 30 to 40,000 range.
Were you, your company is equivalent to what Lafayette Parish just went through?
I did not work with Lafayette Parish. I know about Lafayette Parish, but I did not work with Lafayette.
Okay, but it's very similar with here for holding.
It is, it's a little more, we do a little more communication, we want to bring your people with us, because it's important. If we do our job right, before we're done with the assessment, your people are already making improvements. Does that make sense? But I, when we see it, I'm very seldom find where we go in and we do work, and we're working with a team, and they say, wow, this is broken, and they're going to wait for me to do something about it. Usually they're like, hey, can we go ahead and do some of this stuff right now and get this fixed, and we stop leaving? That's part of what we do, I think really the value in the work I do, and I can't call my references, check, I'm, I can give you a ton of references. The value isn't that, you're going to get a big report, it's going to be pretty, but to be honest, reports dead weight. What is valuable is us laying that foundation and getting everyone on the same page, understanding what they can do to drive improvement, and then showing them a path forward to be able to do that.
So all that information you're going to be requesting, you're going to be requesting from the staff?
We pull LDOE information?
You don't request no information.
We request information from staff, and we do, we kind of go back and forth with LDOE and staff.
I remember 1994, we began this board, this board was $2 billion deficit, me and the five other board members got together, went to the schools, came there, and done exactly what you done, we made cuts from the top. And ever since then, we went to surplus territory. So I don't think, you know, you need a doctorate degree to do them cuts. I can, I can tell you where there's need to cut right now, and then the board listens to me, I tell you what, tomorrow morning, they'll get out of this deficit. But those five members not there anymore, so I can't say too much.
So, the way I got. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't notice that.
Have staff review it, have staff review it, and get back to this.
All right.
Thank you so much.
We'll adjourn. We'll adjourn by Mr. Paul Keen. Say goodbye, Mr. Ojel, we need to adjourn. All right, for the regular meeting, September 3rd, please step on, we will concede these prayers. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Please guide and judge our devils tonight, please help guide our decisions, and let them be the best for our students and staff. In the holy name we pray, amen. In the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. For the children of the United States of America, in the glory of their Father, and the children of the children of the Lord, in the foundation of God, in the scope of the difference and justice for all. And in Austin's application.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Ms. Ally Ojel to come up at this time. This past summer, I had the pleasure of joining Ms. Ally in New Orleans for Green Teachers Community Activity at the end of the year, and surprisingly, not surprisingly, I want to say, Ms. Ally was named the Louisiana Elementary Teacher of the Year for the entire state. Ms. Ally is a fourth grade teacher at Ten Shaw Elementary.
Oh, yes.
And if you've ever been to her class, she's a phenomenal teacher, she really exemplifies what teaching, what teachers should, should represent, and just does, did an amazing job. A superintendent was sitting at a table near us and said, well, good luck to you, I looked up at him and I said, she already won it, you know, literally before it was announced. Again, congratulations to you, you represented the district so well.
Thank you.
We do have a flower for you as well, as well as the. We do have. We do have.
I love you.
Chad, can you hear me, sir?
I'm putting my seat up.
[laughing]
There you go.
[laughing]
On the other side?
That's where we were.
No. Not cool, y'all.
Now we go.
[laughing]
Okay. All right. I can't see, I can't see. All right, ready? All right. Congratulations.
Oh, I apologize. We, one second. We also have State Representative, Mr. Chad Boyer, who has a special presentation for you as well.
All right.
Miss Ally, on behalf, on behalf of the House Representatives, if we present you with this certificate of honor that you are Louisiana's Teacher of the Year in major schools, and we are proud of you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. [applause] Thank you.
Great job.
Ms. Ally was the Southern Scriptures Employee of the Month for July. All the Southern Scriptures Employee of the Month was nominated by Dr. Downs, with Ms. Christine Foster, Ms. Christine. [applause]
I want Dr. Downs to go ahead and be one of the.
Thank you. So most of you know Christine Foster. I've been working here about a year, a little over a year, and I don't need a lead, I'm good, Mr. Wilson. So, Ms. Christine from day one was so supportive in everything we do all around the district. She is a tireless worker. I can call you at ten o'clock at night, or five AM, or send you an email at three AM, and you return that email at three fifteen AM. Thank you so much for being so welcoming, and for putting our students and education first in our district. Thank you.
All right. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I don't feel bad thanks to Mr. Boyer, who's in the morning at two o'clock now.
Any items?
Any response?
Yes.
All right. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed? None. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Boo.
Move by Mr. St. Paul, Mr. Pusley. Okay, we can vote.
Just, you know.
Christine, they were. Yep. There's no items to be voted on. We're bold. Finance Committee recommendations. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the Finance Committee meeting.
Accept.
Stay there. The second, second by Mr. Clay, is vote. It should pass. New Business. Public hearing is now open for New Business. No discussion, closed. Public hearing is closed. Item B, Consent and Approve Finance Committee Recommendation for Adoption of Budget for General and Special Revenue Funds for the Year Ending in July third. Is this group or?
This is just the formal process that it has to go through to be on the board agenda, and not just from the finance recommendation. So that's why it's restated again.
All right. Item C, Presentation by.
You do have to vote.
You need a motion.
You need a motion?
Yes.
All right. Well, let's vote. First of all, I need a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Pusley. Let's vote. Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have a presentation by Mrs. Bree Sargent with the Acadiana Center for the Arts. Hello.
How are y'all tonight?
Good, really.
Great. I am here to share about a new partnership between the St. Martin Parish School Board and the Acadiana Center for the Arts. My name is Bree Sargent, and the Education Director for the Acadiana Center for the Arts.
You're with us?
Yes. So the Acadiana Center for the Arts are located in Lafayette, but we are the Regional Arts Council for all of Acadiana, which of course includes St. Martin Parish. We are celebrating our fiftieth year anniversary this year, and for most of that time, we've worked heavily in the area of arts and education, working in partnership with public school districts to provide arts experiences for students and tools for teachers in bringing the arts into education. We've created a model for this work through partnership with Lafayette Parish School System for many years, and have recently begun working across other districts to bring the same programming. We've created a model that is a lot more financially sustainable for districts to provide arts experiences for their students. We've been working with St. Landry Parish, Ramillion Parish, and this year, we're working with St. Martin Parish as well as Ivory Parish as well in full district partnership. So why the arts and education? Student engagement. Students are, when you're, when you're embedding the arts into classrooms, students are engaged. They're, we're reaching all types of learners. When students are more motivated by things like the arts or sports at school, they come to school. And when students are at school, we can teach them. So that's the way to go. Self-expression. For many students, the arts are an outlet, a way for them to explore through visual arts, music, dance, theater, spoken word, and arts in education provides a safe space for expression by students in this way. Academic growth. Many of our programs are connected to academic content areas like math, science, social studies, literacy, through, through the arts. And studies are showing that students demonstrate improved cognitive development, higher retention rates at that learning, and deeper understanding. Social competencies. We think of these as soft skills, right? Arts enrichment programs impact students' social skills and emotional wellbeing. Teachers report observing students collaborating, communicating, using critical thinking and problem solve, solving skills, and just sitting in the struggle longer before asking for help. And these, of course, as adults, we know are tools that we want our students to have. And we can't discount the fact that when students are learning and participating in the arts, they're having fun. And while having fun, because having fun makes you, learning while having fun makes you want more learning. So, good all around. So what does this look like for your schools? This is the cover of the season catalog that is at the printers right now for your district. Inside that catalog, there's going to be all kinds of information. One of the programs that we're offering to your district are in-school performances. Students often don't have an experience with a live performance unless they go off campus. And it's sometimes hard to get kids off campus. So we bring those right into schools. Students are introduced to a wide variety of performances, music, theater, spoken word, dance, storytelling, and they're all listed in that season in that catalog that you just saw. We also have the Teaching Artist Program, which brings practicing professional artists from your community and surrounding communities who are trained by our staff at ACA to work with, with students in classrooms, thinking about understanding developmental levels and classroom management and all of that, but bringing artists in to work directly with students. This is in all schools. Beyond just the things that we're doing through this partnership, ACA offers lots of things for teachers and at, and students. And as a partner with ACA, all of our schools will also have access to professional development opportunities in the arts. We have an online, amazing, whole group of, of online classes, visual arts and movement classes. We have instrument recycling programs, get more band instruments into schools so that everyone has access, not just those who can afford it. So lots of other things through the partnership. We are going to kick all of this off next week on Thursday, September eleventh, from four to six PM, at the Tetch Center for the Arts, where we will be inviting all of the school's designated arts and education liaisons. That's someone at the school who the principal has named that will be the contacts for this program. We'll be inviting them there to learn all about that. We'll have those little catalogs. Some of the teaching artists will be on hand to talk about the things that they're doing, and we invite you to join us for that as well. It'll be a nice evening to kind of kick off what we're doing. You'll receive an email invitation with that information directly, so you don't have to remember it. I am always available for questions. This is my contact information. That's my direct line and my email address, and I welcome any conversations and questions about how we can work with your district to make these opportunities and experiences more meaningful for our students and teachers. When we go into partnership with a district, we've got some programs and things that we've been doing for years and years, but we know that every district is different, every school is different, and has different needs and goals, and we definitely want to tailor these programs to those. So thank you so much. Y'all have any questions for anyone?
Did you say for grades?
All grades.
All grades.
This will be open to every school and every grade level.
And how many days you go visit? Every day, or?
It is not every day. It will be, it will just be episodic. So each school will receive one performance that they can choose through the year. So from that season, they're all different. People can, schools can choose those, and each school will have access to nine classroom sessions with teaching artists. So the administration and the arts, arts and education liaison will decide how those are divided out, so that every student can receive access to something.
It is free?
It is free.
It is?
It's free for the schools? Yes, they are, they are not having pay boards.
Is this a grant?
This is for, it is through, through a partnership between ACA and the district, so there isn't cost, a cost to the district. It is a contract between ACA and the district.
All right. Well, we thank you, Ms. Sargent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bree. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, Presentation by County Agent regarding LSU Ag Center Annual Report.
Running about the store, stores here.
Yeah, we usually come by the time running starts, and probably going to start around the sixteenth, so just in a short period of time, we'll be way behind, okay? It looks like they have a big crop. Looks like there's a real good crop out there. We've had a lot of rains this year. And so far, it's real promising. You just need to try to avoid any kind of hard freezing in here that you mess that up. We're happy to be in front of y'all once again. We have a really great staff at our office here in Rogue Ridge, myself, I'm the parish chair, and we also have Ms. Deborah, who does our nutrition and, and community health work. We have tonight to be hearing from Ms. Ashley and Ms. Erica, who lead up our four H program. And we have a administrative coordinator, Ms. Leah Basro, she's kind of the face. We come into our office, she's usually there. And we also have a student worker, Mrs. Belle Potte, who's been working for us, who actually, actually is an education major at U W, who just started. So we have, we've had a few of our student workers have been education majors, and Ms. Erica's daughter was one as well. So we've worked with some student workers who have become some great teachers. Agriculture's a big success. We're at St. Martin Parish. This past year in 2024, brought in about eighty-nine billion. Our biggest crop, as we were mentioning, is sugarcane. Counted for about fifty-two million. Some of the crops, and we'll show you some of the acres real quickly, has been declining a little bit, been declining a little bit in value. That's soybeans. Soybean price has been a little lower. I've had some issues with our crops. So only accounted for about one million, but rice continues to, to be strong, about five million. And we always have a lot of hunting and fishing in our parish at the LSU Ag Center. They're, in their, adding summary, kind of sets the value for what those leases are worth, what hunting is worth in our parish, as well as our wild crawfish catches, and our, also our pond crawfish catches as well. We have horses, and we have cattle in our parish, our main livestock, animal enterprises, and we assess about nine million for that. In the folder that you have, we also have a little booklet that the Ag Center puts together, that gives you an idea of kind of what each crop is worth in the state of Louisiana, and it has some good information there as well. When you look at our parishes, as I said, our sugarcane acreage has been pretty steady, really over the last five years. It's usually around that thirty to thirty-three thousand acre mark. And as I said, soybeans has declined a good bit. I know that, with the time that I've been here over ten years, our acreage down, now is down to only about two thousand acres, and rice is also like sugarcane, has stayed pretty steady. So I thought it would be interesting just to kind of draw up what things that we ranked the first in. You know, okra action. You would think that, not a whole lot of okra being grown in Louisiana, but when you look at what's being reported by farmers, we actually leave the state no for production. One time, there was a lot of canning in the state of okra, and a lot of other crops, vegetable crops. But today, there's not a whole lot of any, there's really no vegetable processing left in Louisiana. But we do still have a lot of people in St. Martin Parish who plant some okra and sell okra. We're also real big in honey. When you look at what was reported last year, we have a lot of honeybees in our parish. A lot of people don't realize that, how much honey production, bee hives are out there around St. Martin Parish. But we, we do rank high in that commodity. Sugarcane, we've just had so much expansion of sugarcane from throughout the state. Pointe Copee now is actually the number one sugarcane parish. We have cane all the way being grown to Alexandria, even up in Concordia Parish, the Felicianas. Because of that, we have more sugar being grown in Louisiana than ever before in the history of our state. We've never grown this much cane before. A lot of it ends up coming to our mill here at Algasuka. We get cane, I think, from over ten parishes end up there. So we're grinding more cane than ever, which brings money into our parish, so it's not, not a bad thing. But we have had a lot of expansion in other areas that we're not, as a parish, we're ranked about seventh. Crawfish production, we rank about eighth, and that would be in terms of pond production. A lot of your rice acres, when you go out west, where they grow a lot of rice, all that acreage is typically in crawfish production, so they're much bigger, higher numbers than we have. And we're thirteenth in rice, and about twenty-eighth in soybeans. And that kind of covers how we're ranked in terms of St. Martin Parish. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my coworkers, Ms. Erica and Ms. Ashley. I'm going to tell you some about their four H programs. They also, I think, have some four Hs here to kind of express their gratitude to y'all's support of our programs.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ashley Eats. I am one of the two four H agents here. I am going on my ninth year of being a four H agent, and I'm just going to talk to y'all a little bit about our four H program. I know y'all want to try to hear from the kids, so I'm going to keep mine short and sweet. Here in the parish, a little program overview. We do an assortment of things every year. A few of the highlights are Healthy Living, Science Engineering and Technology, Agriculture, Citizenship, Leadership, Volunteer Development, and Life Skills. The show must go on. These are a few of our events that we participate in throughout the years. We have a four H Fun Day, a livestock, a parish livestock show and sale. We have a regional challenge camp. We have a parish-wide Fall Fest contest. We participate in multiple summer camps. Four H University for the older kids, we host an honors night. We have multiple workshops throughout the year, ranging in different events, and we also have an achievement there at the end of the year. The pictures are from different events this year. Top, the outdoors picture is summer camp. We took over fifty kids to summer camp this year. The dancing picture is probably Achievement Day. I know Ms. Erica is, probably Achievement Day, right? Where the four Hers from all over the parish comes and we celebrate on one day. The next picture is probably Fun Day, where we have a contest day during the Thanksgiving holiday. And the bottom picture on the stairs is our dedication for Four H University. We took eighteen youth to Four H University this year. And we have multiple blue ribbon winners and even a state contest winner, and he will talk tonight. Actually, it's Mr. Stewart, so. Our educational focuses for this year. So four H, we go into every school, we're in every public school here in St. Martin Parish, and we bring a hands-on educational co-curricular lesson that meets different standards. that meets different standards. For our third grade cloverbuds, we are gonna talk about pollinators. Um, and the fourth through twelfth graders, we are doing the Tree of Life Skills. So the pollinators, they're gonna learn about ants, bats, bees, butterflies, hummingbirds, all the fun, cute things. Uh, and fourth to twelfth graders are gonna be learning about life skills, things like laundry care, first aid, internet safety, phone etiquette, dealing with disappointment, all the fun things. We also do a big thing with our junior leaders. Um, that is seventh through twelfth graders from throughout the parish who do extra. They come to an extra meeting once a month outside of school time, um, and we do financial literacy. This will be our second year focusing on financial literacy with them. Um, last year, we did a hands-on financial literacy lesson with them. Um, and they built their own budget, I guess, for the year, for their end-of-the-year trip. They planned out their ways to raise money for this trip. And they ended up with a all-expenses-paid trip to Universal Studios. I guess that's not in yet, but they, they got a trip. They earned a trip. They paid for their own trip to Universal Studios. And we took eighteen, eighteen kids to Orlando. We flew. A bunch of them were their first flights on an airplane. That was a lot of fun. That was a once-in-a-lifetime trip for some of them. Curriculum, so we have lots of curriculum that is available for any teacher to have for free. Um, they just have to reach out to us about it. Uh, everything ranging from financial management, life skills, health, um, all different sciences. You have information on this in your packets. I'm not gonna sit there and read all of it. Uh, the biggest one out of here I want to touch on is incubation education. I piloted a lesson last year with some smaller children. And I took an incubator into the school, set eggs. We talked about it. We talked about what, what's happening inside of the eggs every day. And the eggs actually hatched, and they got to watch them hatch. And when I tell you the school was in an uproar, I had the whole school, run, teachers running down the hallway going, "The chicks are hatching. The chicks are hatching." We survived floods and power outages and all kind of things, and the children loved it. Um, so I got a grant this year and I, and find at least two, hopefully maybe three more incubators. And I hope to be in different science classes throughout the parish throughout the year, um, doing the same lesson. I hope so.
Very interesting.
The children loved it. The teachers loved it. The principal was sitting there knocking on the window going, "Are they hatching yet?" Like every time he'd see me, he'd say, "I checked the humidity this morning. We're good." So it's a great way for us to get in the school system a lot more and to get everybody involved in teaching them about agriculture at the same time. Um, project clubs. We have two main project clubs here in the parish, shooting sports and livestock. Uh, I think our shooting sports program is a hundred strong and our livestock program is very close to fifty. Um, both have grown in the past few years and it's a great way, uh, for the kids to do more things and learn more out of their projects. Um, citizenship and community service. This is the junior leader picture of them at Universal Studios. And this is a picture of one of their lemonade stands and bake sales that they did in conjunction with Tractor Supply. Um, they set up two, two afternoons at Tractor Supply for two or three hours each and all together came home with almost a thousand dollars. Just with lemonade and baked goods. So that was amazing. That was just one of their many fundraisers that they did throughout the year to afford that trip to Universal Studios. Um, and now we have just a few four Hers that are gonna come up and say just a few words of thanks for all of y'all's help and support throughout the year.
Good afternoon, y'all. My name is Benjamin Alnder. I'm a senior at Grover's High School and I'm one of the four H members, uh, here in the parish. My main project is I am in shooting sports. I shoot archery during the past ten years. Uh, I'm also a shooting sports ambassador for the parish the past three years. Hopefully I'll do it again this year. Yeah, um, I also am a, uh, club president at Grover's High School for our four H club. And throughout four H, I've, uh, been many experiences. I went to four H U, like they pulled up there. I was one of the camp counselors that helped out at, uh, four H camp. And also helped out at various other events like, uh, four H Fun Day and, uh, Achievement Day. And, you know, in, in the four H, I wanna thank y'all for allowing us to do this and helping us. I did that, and then I also went to March Movement about two years, two years ago. It was a week-long event, uh, off the coast of Louisiana, plenty of marsh grass, learned about coastal erosion, stuff like that. But favorite trip out of all them was I was selected to go to, uh, four H Club Congress in Atlanta, Georgia. So went out there. It was a week-long event, uh, with foragers nationwide. Got to mingle with them and learn many things. We also had, uh, community service days within the, within that and within all of the other programs. And yeah, I just want to say thank y'all for everything y'all do for our program.
Good afternoon. My name is Mia Alender and I'm a freshman at Terrell's Catholic High School. This will be my seventh year in four H and my third year as a junior leader. I'm also the junior leader reporter for this year. My primary projects in four H are child development and archery. This year, this summer, I became state certified and plan to use the skills I learned at the training in the rest of my child development work in L.A. Through four H, I've also become a certified camp four H counselor and will be able to attend summer camp as a counselor with the younger foragers in our parish along with other parishes. This past summer, I attended four H University for the first time and can't wait to go back next summer. I recently received the monetary award in eighth grade for state records. In archery, I shoot a recurve burbow. I'm not the best at this sport, but I've always had fun and usually scored higher each time. Next week, I'll be interviewing to be a St. Martin Parish Shooting Sports Ambassador. I'm currently the freshman student council representative at Campus Men's Gymwork and I'm a row mascot for Terrell's. My years and experiences in four H have helped me to gain confidence and to be active and vocal in other organizations. Four H has given me many leadership opportunities over the years, and I continue to learn about being a good leader. I cannot wait to make more memories in the four H program throughout my school. Thank you for the continued support in St. Martin Parish.
Good afternoon. My name is Anastia Uvich. I'm a sixth grader at Cecilia Junior High School and a proud three-year member of the St. Martin Parish four H club. I'm excited to be here today to share my thoughts about four H and what it means to me. Being a part of four H has already taught me so much. Not only have I learned acro, about agriculture and animals, but I've also gained skills in leadership, citizenship, and giving back to others in my community. I've had the chance to tell new things, meet new friends, and grow in confidence. Whether it's giving an instruction, volunteering, or learning a new skill, four H has, has helped me become a better version of myself. The four H pledge says that I will use my head, heart, hands, and heart to serve my club, community, country, and world, and I take that promise to heart. Being a four H member has given me many opportunities to make a difference. This past year, I collected toys for children at Christmas time, donated personal care items to local veterans, helped gather donations for residents of Saint Agnes Nursing Home, made an appreciation poster for my school's bus drivers, collected supplies for our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, and visited and played bingo with the residents at Saint Agnes Nursing Home. I love helping others and I'm so thankful to be part of a club that encourages kindness, service, and community involvement. Four H also offers so many fun activities. From Fall Fest and Fun Day to Super Saturday and Achievement Day, there's something for everyone. In conclusion, four H has helped me grow in so many ways. It's made me more confident, taught me to work both independently and part of a team, and shown me the value of sportsmanship, hard work, and dedication. Four H has strengthened my current friendships and helped me build new ones. I'm excited to share what I've learned with others and to stay involved in my community. I'm grateful for the memories I'm making with my family through four H and I hope to be part of the four H family for many years to come. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm excited to continue my four H journey and to keep learning, leading, and making a difference. Will you join us?
Uh, my name is Julia Vela. I'm currently twelve years old. This is my fifth year in four H. I've had a lot of fun and learned a lot in four H. I've been to four H Summer Camp three times. And this past year, I went to Texas, Alabama, and Arkansas with my shooting sports team. Four H has helped me to become more outgoing and confident on doing, learning new things and helping other foragers to learn new things too. Thank you for supporting four H and our youth and our birth.
Hi, my name is James Goche and I'm a tenth grader at Terrell's Catholic. And I just want to share with y'all some of the opportunities that I was able to experience because of y'all's support. Last year, I was able to go on a trip to Washington, D.C. And, um, I was also a four H camp counselor. I attended, um, four H Universally, University, sorry. And, um, I won the tractor driving contest and I went on a trip to Tennessee. I also attended March Movement and the Orlando trip. And, uh, thanks to y'all, I was able to do all these things and it's, uh, all these opportunities have helped me become a better public speaker, more confident, and, um, just helping me become a leader. And thank y'all.
My name is Ian Gaspar. I've been in four H for two years. This is my third year. I'm mainly part of the shooting sports program, uh, this summer and junior leaders this summer. I've been, I went to Universal at the beginning of the summer for a week, a lot of fun. And then after that, a month or two later, I went to National, was in Arkansas. Got to make a lot of good memories of those, uh, experiences. And I just want to thank y'all for allowing this program to be in the news.
My name is Karine Deesel and this is my, uh, third year in, um, four H. And now this is gonna be my fourth year going. And I shoot B B, uh, and do shooting sports. And, um, we're gonna skip a year for B B and go to, uh, air business, about shooting. And I went to summer camp at a lot of fun. I did outdoor matches. I did archery, shot a rifle. I went fishing and, and I went in the pond. And I just want to thank y'all for supporting four H.
Good afternoon. My name is Ada Medrick and I'm a sophomore at Terrell's Catholic High School. Four H has given me many opportunities that I never expected to have. My main project in four H is poultry. But also, this summer, I was able to go visit four H U, compete at LSU's campus. Also through four H, I, they were competing state record, and I won a trip to Atlanta to attend four H National Congress. I would just like to thank you for all the continued support you give to the St. Martin Parish four H program.
Thank y'all very much. I don't know if this is the market. Do y'all have any questions for us?
I was just impressed.
Yes, yes.
Without a cry at that age.
Karine and Ian. Karine, you are at TESH?
No.
Cecilia Junior, Ian?
Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much. Alright, next, Ozzy Agenta. Uh, let's see. Mr. Wilson, discussion of hiring a bond consultant for reaching the trans bond?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to, uh, you know, based on the, the amount of projects that I know are going to, to, to start and the amount of board that is going to require, I think that it will be in our best interest as a board, as a school system, to, to seek a consultant who can assist, uh, in making sure that those projects are aligned with what you as board members and what the community wants, uh, to be able to assist Mr. Shabani as he navigates that process. Because, uh, we know that it could be daunting, uh, with a number of projects. And we just want to make sure that those are done to the specifications that we require. There's not a waste of the, the money that, uh, we were subrogaciously afforded. So I just think that that's something that I, I think a couple of board members that you mentioned as well too, uh, in seeking out a, a bond consult, uh, bond consultant to be able to assist Mr. Shabani. So that's just something that I would.
Is there a?
Yeah. I mean, and in all honesty, even if it takes two individuals, not a company, I wouldn't have a problem with it because we spent a lot of money the last couple bonds. But if, if, we need people, let, let's say, I mean, it's a big, I say a big hire, but a lot of projects. If we need a couple of people, you know, bring it back to the, you know, to the board because we get, we can spend a hundred thousand dollars on two individuals, a total of two hundred dollars, and still come out way ahead of what we spent the past couple of bonds.
Well, I tell you what, I got an individual in mind I can work with. And I tell you what, he ain't gonna, he ain't gonna fuck it like they fucked up the last one. And I, I can take the individual there. I can say it back every time, but I can't say it no more. I know this guy here can come in and you can do great business.
And, and again, they're gonna be answering for Mr. Shabani, that's the superintendent.
And I'm gonna say, I never spoke to the guy yet, but I'm gonna tell Mr. Wilson, hey, I seen him a couple of months ago.
Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Okay. You need to talk with him, probably.
Alright, you get with Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, the, the funding, fund is, could that not come from the bond itself?
Yes, I mean, based on my conversation there, it can't come from the, from the bond itself.
Person just has to be hard as a contract employee, not an actual employee in the district.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we need to. It's just discussion.
Discussion only. We're gonna vote on it next meeting?
Yes.
Bring it back up.
Bring it back up next meeting. Alright. Uh, next item is consider and approve adding a permanent bus aid position to the JSEF route. Does anybody?
I'll ask, uh, Mr. Bone to speak on this, but, uh, the JSEF route is picks up kids from Cecilia, Grove Bridge, and Parks. And again, these aren't your regular students. These are students that have removed from their normal campus. So it puts a lot on their bus driver having to drive the bus and monitor those kids. We have been using a substitute, uh, aid in the past. We just want to make a position firm. It's someone to help that driver monitor those kids as they bring them to the alternative school, JSEF.
How many kids are we talking about?
Currently, there's forty kids now, but again, JSEF numbers fluctuate. Last year, we got up to a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, but didn't we do A and D days?
Because we got that big, and now we're currently at fifty-five. So again, it's, this, the school year had just started. I had five explosion hearings this week.
I realize it's all well-disciplined kids.
Yeah.
Well-disciplined kids, well-disciplined kids.
Well, one time, we had to get the police, the bus stopped in Grove Bridge High and the, and the sheriff had to move. Yeah, but the safety, that's a, that's a weak spot. It used to not be, but, uh, I mean, that's all the craziness in this country.
Yeah.
So how many kids can ride on a bus? About sixty? Sixty? Okay. So you always just have one bus, not two?
As of now, it's just one, you're on one bus.
Oh, okay.
I'm big motion.
Well, a motion on Mr. Richard, second one, Mr. Clay. Alright, the vote.
That's, that's your man.
Vote your pastor. Alright, item G, consider and approve adding a bus aid position to the, to Amara Bus Route from St. Martin Grove Bridge to Cecilia to accommodate students side of B, Mr. Shabani.
Uh, similar to the JSEF route, uh, we are having some issues on this particular bus. Um, just go back to last year, three times. Just go back to last year, three times last year. I had to go on site to assist a bus driver. Sheriff's Office was called. Yeah, we did lose two, two bus drivers because of, say, students on the bus. And we have a few students that do have an IDP and they would be put on a sped bus. But unfortunately, we do not have a sped container.
It's difficult to have a sped route just for M to M. So those students who are actually zoned for, I believe, is it Grove Bridge?
Yeah, Grove Bridge.
Grove Bridge, they're choosing to M to M to Cecilia. And therefore, they need to be transported from their home to Cecilia.
Can we make this like a temporary position and not a permanent position? Because this won't always, I mean, it's not going to always be the case. It's going to graduate. You know, and if, if we need, can we do like on a year-to-year basis? You follow what I'm saying?
I mean, I don't have a problem with that. The staff is going to give the basis. We'll just bring it back year to year.
Yeah, because.
Even if it's the same person.
You might have need for it.
Because you graduated or whatever, and then you wouldn't need that person, right?
Problem is that we get new kids every year. Last year, this is for one. This year, we are correct to two, possibly three. So there's an aide that is needed on the bus.
I would like to approve it, but on a year-to-year basis. Deborah, just the same thing.
All right, so we have a motion on this statement? To approve it on a year-to-year basis?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second on Mr. Goche. All right, let's vote. Motion for that. All right. Board member requests, item A, discuss hiring three or four custodians to work just outside as a pilot program for six months in St. Martin area.
Okay. I did speak to Mr. Shabaye and I think he has two. Because maybe it's people that work on the outside right now. And they have two from, I think, the, well, one from the junior high and one from the senior high. Our school is horrible. There's nobody that's really keeping on, like, the outside really clean. Because they need to be pressure washed and trees need to be trimmed. We have a baseball field that needs to be cut. The stadium needs to be cleaned. There's just a lot of stuff that our custodians are not doing. And I think maybe if we, I don't know if y'all want to outsource it. That's going to cost a lot of money. And I think maybe if we start something for on this side and for on the other side, if it works pretty good, maybe it might work where we can, you know, because they're going to take care of, like, the lawn mowers. And if we need to, if y'all would want them to pressure wash the metal roofs, they've never been cleaned before. Never, you know, I've been over there for like twenty. Actually, that's a lot of money.
So, Wanda, what you asking for is to start like a pilot program in St. Martin area? You know, take maybe four janitors out of.
Yeah, he has two.
That way, some go out there, cut the grass, all the grass, all they do.
Yeah, pressure wash.
Pressure wash.
What are the janitors doing? I mean, again, we go back to that. You know, they should be doing their job. And if they're not, then the principal needs to address it. Again, put them on an assistance plan. Put them on assistance plan one year or one time. That's the one thing I learned early on as a board member. Put them on the assistance plan. Get them corrected. Put them on the assistance plan again. Guess what? They're not going to get corrected. Then you terminate them.
Yeah, but we still, we still have that problem with our stadium. Who's washing our buildings, you know? It's not just that.
When I first, when I first got on board, we had, Olin would get this crew. Every, every August or September, depending on which game would fail first, they'd go out and they'd pressure wash. And we need to go back to that, you know, and I don't know whatever happened to the four-man crew that we approved years ago.
Well, some of them, some of them, they left. I think we only have two that's, uh.
I mean, I have, I have one.
You have one, but then you have one on the way.
Yes, I have one.
Or Cindy's out, though, right? He can come back at any time or something else. Yeah. He's unbelievable, yeah. So it's just like to try out to see if it would work and stuff. And we can cut costs down too, like on the gas and the repairs of the lawn mowers and stuff like that. And we are trying to cut down costs, you know what I'm saying? How do you cut costs by adding employees? How are you going to cut?
She said she would take out your employees out of each school.
Oh, that's not.
And, and they'll go around, wash the building, clean it up, and do minor janitors, staff janitors, like work.
So you're taking, you're taking away everybody?
They have two that want to come, and then he has two already. Well, he has one right now, but another one's, I think, might be coming back.
Yeah, still adding. Who's going to handle their duties when they leave the school?
Right. Well, that's, that's why they've been on here to look, to see, because at the square footage, because I think right there, custodians come in, like, at, we might have two. One come in at six, another one come in at seven. It needs to be staggered, you know, we need to really look at that.
But we need to give that recommendation to Mr. Wills because we, a couple of meetings ago, we had told him to look at the square footage of our facilities. And our students and see if those particular schools need. But I don't see us adding people is going to bring a problem.
Well, it's not adding. It's just taking them away so we can get our stuff clean, up to date, you know? Because nobody's, nobody's.
Another school falls behind them. I agree, because I have the same issue that I'm going to be bringing up.
Exactly.
So what you're, what you're saying is, we're looking at Mr. Shabaye utilizing one custodian from each school to opt, to, to do the work at all of the schools.
Right.
In the same location.
In the St. Martin area.
Okay, in the St. Martin area. And if this works, you can do it in the other areas.
Yeah, we'll go like to Cecilia, Grove Bridge.
To where, uh.
I don't have the.
The.
The only question I have is who's going to supervise?
Mr. Shabaye? No, I'm saying he gives them the duty to do. I mean, he got his day. Well, he supervises now, he's watching.
Put more assistance plan. Put more assistance plan.
I'm convinced, big time.
What?
Because y'all took a custodian from Grove Bridge High School, and I wrote that up last month, that we are shorthanded. So I had to revamp everybody's duties and just got to suck it up and do what we got to do. My stadium got cleaned. My campus is cleaned. Things are, I mean, I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're trying to hold people from other schools.
Because you hold up people accountable, it sounds. That's what it sounds like. I mean, I don't want to read between the lines, but it seems like you holding them accountable. Everybody else should do that.
Shorthanded. We're trying to.
Everybody's shorthanded then.
And the situation comes.
And you have a large campus.
And he has a sirens together for his custodians.
Correct. And the situation comes in when you start to put pen to paper for some of these custodians. They start calling and saying that, well, so-and-so doesn't need to be fired because, you know, so-and-so is, it needs their job or whatever. And there's a lot of custodians, if we really went by the book, would be fired because of the lack of work that they do. You have some that really go above and beyond and it'll grind. But you have some that will not, they will not go outside to cut grass.
That's right.
There must be this, whatever. We don't have, I don't have no problem with Grove Bridge. I never personally complained about the custodian.
And it takes one, one, one custodian to ruin two or three. With the added.
We got on the outside to cut the grass, but they don't weed it.
Let it go.
You know, we just put a new fence. The grass is growing on top of it.
And we've purchased, after, after bringing, after bringing weedies, we're still right after we purchased last year. We've purchased more brand new weedies. And I'm going to tell you what's happening. We're breaking the lawn mowers on purpose.
That's right.
And the weedies are coming up missing after, we have specific locks on those doors.
Well, how many times do lawn mowers still? I mean.
There's cameras out there.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to solve the problem.
You want to tell you what, we had a situation in Cecilia, they called them on camera.
But then, when they don't cut the grass.
It was a beautiful thing that happened.
Has to send his team over there to cut the grass. Well, I mean, I don't think that's right, you know?
Well, why do we keep them?
It's called.
I can't let them go.
They're worth that, they're enough.
You know what I'm saying?
You know, we put a policy in to put it on the superintendent, but we can reverse that policy and care professionals by law, unless they change it, we can do the higher, we can. It's still.
So it doesn't matter.
We have a few that are, are some very, very dedicated and really work hard. But the problem that we've been common this summer is you had, at some schools, you may have only one twelve-month employee. So the other people are ten months. So once their time is done, they're gone. So you may have that one custodian who's trying to maintain the inside of the facilities as well as the outside. And I'll be honest with you, it's difficult. We had, love our schools, they went to St. Martin Senior High during the summer. And they had a big crew and it was difficult for them to try to cover everything that, because it's a, it's a big campus. We're only, I believe, am I correct in saying one twelve-month employee?
Yeah, there's two.
Two twelve-month employees. One was on vacation and the other person was there. But again, I don't want to speak about whether or not people go inside or outside. But some people were, I was told, were refusing to go outside.
But it's still horrible now, though. I mean, even though that was the summer, school has started. You know? I just say, let's try.
While we're on your topic, I'll just slide mine in so we don't have to go over after a while.
All right.
Mine pertains to Cecilia Junior High. We have mines growing on the school. You pass around over there. We had a construction crew out there and even the, the workers, which are Mexicans, were basically, we were trying to figure out if we wanted to add more concrete. They said, yeah, you might as well pull more concrete because they're not cutting the grass. So I said, you know, and that's somebody that's not even from here, you know, and it makes no sense. Mines are growing. I mean, the football field, nah, I think they got it under control. But the embarrassing thing about it all was about three weeks ago, we had a little couple that lives right next to the football field. And they took their personal equipment and they cut it because they had pride in the area. And they went to the basketball was long. Plus, they were probably preventing mosquitoes and snakes because it was so tall of a grass. So again, we need to start holding people accountable. And it starts from the principal. Because if you, if you look at, like y'all said, if you look at the campuses that are cleaned, that principal's holding people accountable.
Correct.
That's all I have to say.
All right.
So, Mr. Blanger, you can't find a custodian or what?
No, they cut a position. They cut a position at my school.
But I think at your school, how many custodians do you have? Because you got to look at your square footage too. That's why I gave it on there.
Looked at, but like Mr. Wills said, I have to go on the largest campuses in the parish. I mean, we have acres, like forty acres of land to cut.
Yeah. How many custodians you have, though? What, is it six?
I only have four.
Oh, okay, because I think the other schools, what we have, what we have in this university?
All our high schools.
I think it's saying, six, I think?
Well, in case you said.
Well, yeah, obviously, kids come there. Yeah, and that's why I put it on there, was to look at.
They should have said. They have more students. The campus is big.
Yeah, but they were looking at the square footage too. And that's why I said it's difficult, you know?
All right, Mr. Beatdown, your next item is cafeteria workers and custodian?
If you start asking, speaking of the issues being that I went around a few campuses. You know, I've been on the board over thirty-seven years. I have never had a cafeteria employee call me yet. Until the beginning of school up to now. What it is, I went, there's a few schools that complained about being shorthanded. No subs. They got extra vegetables cooked, which I kind of looked at the grant and, you know, the grant stated that, you know, it pays point some hours for one hundred students. And we're not doing that. Two hundred students, point three hours, somewhere around that. I have to go back and dig up. And what we done, we add additional vegetables and we lost an employee. You know, so if them people go to the Department of Labor, somebody's going to get in trouble, you know? I contacted somebody. And not only that, you know, being that so long, I never heard cafeteria people ever complain. I heard custodians complain. You know, I've been around schools a long time. I always hear a few custodians complain about this. Never cafeteria workers. And for them to complain, that's got to be something wrong. Now, I called several school, they told me, oh, they got a grant also. What they did, called Santa Anna, called a couple of schools, they went to the cup vegetables, where they didn't have to hire additional employee on their grant. You know, like Mark was saying, if we bring an audit in here, that's a fine in right there. That's one fine. Because somebody didn't hire that person for the extra vegetable. Now, other schools, they say they got like point fifteen units, you know, of serving or guests throwing away the cups. You know, so we might need to look into that before somebody contacts Department of Labor and we get in trouble. Well, I have to. I advise them all the time and principals tell them, not the clock, I have to take a break. I advise them again because, you know, don't touch our clock, take your break and, and do what you got to do and go back to work. You know, that's been our policy. But, you know, some, you know, there's always something that's going on. Somebody didn't listen. So basically, and what's happening, again, some of the people complained to me and said, well, they said the manager had to get in the flow, file our policy and our job description. Say, two hours, we're changing our job description. You know, that's what I want to know. Who is doing these things? You know, sometimes, you know, we have to look at who's running that department. If, if the agent ran the department or the fellow program individual running this department, I don't know. You know, I have to ask these questions again. And I don't know what Wanda, when I say, what she, I don't, I went to a few schools, let me be honest with you. It's not nice.
How's that?
What, I'm not finished?
I'm not finished. Go ahead.
I have documentation for the rationale. We have phase one and phase two where we moved student cafeteria workers based on MFP and meal production. The percentage are eighty percent. Phase one in yellow are the schools that receive people. Phase two is in green where we move people. Again, we analyze the data from the beginning of school based on the eighty percent of production. Keep in mind, we also have in portion cuts we order to substantiate the cost. Food service, our department is self-funded. The meal we get paid by meal vendors. The yellows show us that the schools that were lost workers and the other ones that received. As of yesterday, we made another phase two with, let me get my notes. I had it ready. The Steen Academy, I have the top three schools with the highest meal participation. Parks Middle breakfast ninety percent, above the eighty percent accuracy rate, which is our goal. Lunch is at ninety-four. Second is Steen Academy breakfast rate is seventy-two, but she has a lunch participation of ninety-nine percent. And Stevensville, which is breakfast sixty-three and fifty-two. However, phase two, Parks Middle is going to lose a worker. We're going to send that worker to. Okay, Grove Bridge Junior High received another worker. Page two is the beginning numbers we had. Phase, the top color pages show the changes. Grove Bridge Junior High did receive another worker. Although some of the workers, and at Grove Bridge High, we sent a worker to test only because there's one on sick leave. And when that person returns from sick leave, Grove Bridge High is going to give that worker back. We did all this based on student leave. Our program is self-funded. Last year, we had an income of six million, one hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-two. Our expenses were over five million dollars. The procedures we put in place to remain sustainable was we use our SFP. The procedures we put in place to remain sustainable was we use our S F funds to buy plates, spoons, forks to maintain employees opposed to serving processed food and disposable plates. No one lost their job. When school closed, only the four people that retired were removed.
I, I think you're on the wrong page. I had the, hold on. I had the floor. I had the floor. You, you let her talk. You got, you got to let she have her, that's my, Wanda, I, I'm speaking for you. You can't tell me, I, I got to stop you, Mr. Porte. Mr. Porte, I gotta stop you. Next time you're gonna stop me if somebody talk, ask me. When you give me the floor, I got the floor. Don't ask me to stop.
She has the floor.
But when I had the floor, why you stop me?
I didn't stop.
Yes, sir, you stopped me.
No, you was, you paused, you paused and then I gave up.
No, I didn't pause. I was getting some information, some added information.
Also last year with our reimbursement from the state, we had a decrease in reimbursement based on the student decrease. Compared to last year, our purchase food prices went up by three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And commodity prices also went up, which substantiated the bulk of our, uh, budget. Commodity prices went up a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. We spent sixty-six thousand just on paper plates and disposables. Whereas last year, we saved money because last year, year before, we spent a hundred and four thousand dollars on paper goods. Our sustainable practices were as follows. What we did to decrease the cost in feeding the children. We received grants from the Houston Elementary School, which offset the prices for both chicken and shrimp. We also implemented at the high school, the second chance breakfast grant, which increased the numbers of breakfast at the high school. Basically serving iced coffees and chicken and water. Then we received another grant, My Plates Six, Seven, Eight Grant, where Chef Cindy came and gave us nutritional support to increase numbers. At two school, we had a low lunch participation, which was Cecilia Junior High, Brookbridge, uh, Junior High. So with the chef coming in, we also earned the free design. We are redesigning the cafeterias free. Next, we also have the fresh fruits and vegetable snack program, which defrayed some costs at Brookbridge Elementary and Early STEAM Academy. We kept the same number of managers and staff based on the prior year numbers to meet budget guidelines as I stated for those four people who retired. Phase one, techs will move around the parish again based on the MFP and eighty percent meal participation for each school. We received a, a letter from HR that managers have to work besides the staff members to defray the cost five hours based on their job description. We are also implementing portion cups to help the cooks where they don't have to serve. The kids can reach while they're working, passing on the lunch line to grab it themselves. We're trying to remain sustainable because we are self-funded. We get zero dollars from MFP and the district. We get paid by the meals that the kids eat. For the high schools, we getting ready to implement the second chance breakfast again. Mr. Lewis, can you tell us the benefits? We have more kids eating breakfast. When I analyzed the data from the beginning of the school, and also this year to defray costs, we serving four scratch meals, healthy meals for the kids. Now, to defray the cost of the ladies cooking those scratch meals, we have an easy, he can go breakfast, brainless, no heavy cooking. Put it in the oven, serve it to the kids, which two of those days are cereal, fruits, vegetables.
Okay, I think that, that's, thank you.
Alright, I, I won't give that page, but being that, you know, I, I called somebody to give me some numbers, okay? I've been, now, Mr., uh, I think the only school I went to that had close to the numbers of Brookbridge High, I believe they had five, uh, persons, but they said they got six on the paper. Okay, Brookbridge Elementary, the principal is here, they have three, okay? Brookbridge Junior High?
That's in, that's in the manager's name, I'm sorry.
They have, they have two employee. I went and see for myself. How many of the boards I went to? Brookbridge Primary, it says five, they got four. You know, if, if you say I'm lying, I'm lying, but I'm not lying. Everything I just said is not true. You know, I'm not gonna put numbers down and be here talking about things that I seen with my own two eyes. Have a nice little paper, you know, and the spirit of you shouldn't have passed that out, you know? Nah, I didn't even know that. They're supposed to have four employees and they only have three. Tomorrow, I'm, I'm gonna be going check. I'm gonna leave this alone until next week. I didn't know it was gonna get into a competition and somebody's gonna come make a presentation. I'm only saying what I seen. But when, when it gonna get to a point of that nature and I gotta go out there to search school and see them short, see the, uh, work not getting done at the inner, the school, uh, the school day, you know, I miss cafeteria. All the work's not getting done. I, I go with a video camera, I'll show you up to myself next week if it's gonna get to that.
Could I say something, uh?
You know, I, I ain't got the lot, I'm trying to help, I'm trying to help. But if y'all need help, hey, so be. And if HR have to tell you or somebody and that's our policy, the manager works two hour and HR gonna change it, then Mr. Fred, you need to do some recommendations. Because that's the board makes the job description. If, if they wanna change the description, you come to the board. You know, that, that's how it's gonna be, if that's the way y'all wanna run. You're gonna run the show that the show's supposed to be. Hold on, okay, hold on. You know, I'm not getting to that competition. You know, but the people want to bring ideas to me. Bring your ideas and I'm, I'm investigating.
Okay, but I have to let Ms. Julie talk because Ms. Julie doesn't have anything to do with.
But I'm just, but I heard HR, but I'm, Fred, I, I got some damn good air. I run a business, like I told you, I run a business with a hundred and seventy-three employees. I don't have all that problem. I don't have eight, and let me be honest, people say, oh, my truck is dirty. But I, I run a business in my truck. And it's not too many people and I ain't got no doctorate in degree. I don't have to have fifty million people running one thing. And I know when e- employees complaining, that's a problem. And I, Ms. Julie, I get, I just heard it. So when I hear things, I, I, I remember.
HR, HR gets the blame for a lot of things. I did not write the job description, I did not say how long managers have to work. This is kind of the first time I'm hearing that. Years ago, uh, the Fontana Center was hired to do a physical analysis of every job in the district that required physicality. That is the same job description that's been there since before me. I don't know anything about it. All it is, is a copy is made and given to the employees. I do not say how long an employee or a manager has to work on the job board. That is not my, my.
Mr. Porte.
Yeah, stay ready.
Ms. Case, can, can you, uh, relook at the, the numbers for the, uh, bond receipt?
Could I say something?
As far as the, the allocation of the student system?
Mr. Porte.
Yeah, I mean, I would verify where, I got my trade from MFP out of the.
Alright, Ms. Jordan.
Yeah, I just need to say something. Uh, we, when we talk about nutrition, again, that falls under federal programs. And Dr. Phillips and I, we did do analysis of participation, which the gentleman from the, uh, audit company talked about for nutrition. And if you, when you look at that sheet, you're gonna see lunch, majority of the schools are producing. Some schools have five hundred or more than five hundred students that on MFP, but not even half of them are eating. And so when you're looking at that, because we are a self-funding program, you have to look at the amount of employees that we have at each school and how much preparation it takes for students who are participating in the program. Because of the fact that that is funding salaries at those individual schools. So therefore, when you see us moving around staff members from one school to the next, it's because the participation rate at those schools are not there. And they, it can't sustain that salary for those individual cafeteria workers. So, uh, Mr. Porte as well, the cafeteria managers are included in that number. And so if you have three technicians and it says four, it includes that cafeteria manager. Let's go back to STEAM. STEAM has five hundred kids, right? But look at the participation rate. That means kids are eating STEAM, S M S A. Yeah. Look at the participation rate there. It's almost everybody's eating. So you need those workers there. But if I have five hundred people and less than fifty people or less than fifty students are eating, then that labor is not needed. So that's why the numbers are like they are.
Since you got a left page.
Yes, sir.
I went to Brookbridge High.
Yes, sir.
They got six, a hundred and seventy-eight students were eating.
Is that breakfast? Yeah, it went down.
I, I, hey, I, I, hey, from now on, I'm gonna do some counting.
That's right.
Run me from school, but I'm gonna get my.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Hey, and then you got three hundred, look, you got three hundred and fifty kids eating at Brookbridge Elementary, but you got four. And then they're, I counted three, I counted three workers with the manager.
You got, you got ninety-nine percent participation, that's four hundred and ninety kids, but at one school, I'm looking right here, it's fifty-nine percent participation.
You, you, you passed that shit. I'm, I'm gonna go investigate.
I mean, it's a number of kids that you're actually.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand that it's.
Yeah. But the participation is what we need to get up. That's the, that's the key of it. And of course, as for the budget.
Okay, Mr. Beatle.
Yeah.
This, this, Dr. Porte, at, um, STEAM, how many workers do we have? I see on here we have four and then two part-time.
Yes, correct.
One is on sick leave.
Okay, and then one had retired, right?
No.
Okay, but when I was there, you gave them a person and then you sent them to the senior high.
Door to the senior high. You had to pull a person to Cecilia Junior High. So I gave her a full-time person that helped her get her meal going.
So she's gonna get another person?
Yes, that's the, that's the phase two.
Oh, phase two?
Yeah.
So she's gonna have six. She's gonna have six people?
Yes.
Okay, six.
Cause you gotta remember, we have some people who on sick leave are still in that count. They're not, they're not at work, but they still on that school team member count.
Here we go.
Alright, Ms. Beatle, anything else on that? Ms. Beatle.
And at, um, okay, and I see it.
Alright, next item, discuss the drop-off line at the St. Mary's Junior High, Ms. David.
Thank you, Mr. Porte. Uh, all I like to, like, um, through Mr. Wilson, Mr. Shivalia, they have addressed it, it's still not working. Uh, and I think part of, and I got pictures this morning because I had parents send me a couple of pictures. Uh, part of the problem is the, the, the teachers aren't actively monitoring the buses. They're too busy standing there. Okay, I got a picture. So that's one thing, but the principal needs to address it, okay? That's where the, the problem starts. I'm telling you, I, I was on vacation two, three weeks ago. I was going to the store and back and I'm like, I thought I was in Baton Rouge with the traffic. I, I, I challenge anybody to go check it out tomorrow for how backed up it is. It was backed up from the junior high all the way to the high school. That was it. And it was just bumping above.
The concern that they brought up is what Mr. John and I talked about is extending the, the drop-off line to the, to the area where the covered walkway starts and that's what's gonna help. But you have to separate those people and only allow the, the spare buses to drop under the canopy and have everybody else extend that line all the way to the end to drop off in that room. Cause what you have is you have people turning to go to CP, which is around the corner. Then you have people and buses trying to turn into that narrow driveway to come into the St. Mary's Junior, which creates that, 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 that issue right there, that turn. But if it was extended all the way to the end, like it was worked on one day when you went and the day when I went, I think that that's gonna be the solution to, to the issues that they're having at.
Possibly, but they also need, and listen, if the board needs to, to find the big megaphone, the, the horns, and tell the bus, come on, let's go, keep on. You have to have somebody with authority out there telling them where to go.
I think what you do is you block off the, the women standing under the covered walkway. Uh, and I was out there one morning, so literally at about seven fifty is when you start to get that backup. So at seven fifty, you have somebody at that far end directing traffic to come all the way at the end to drop off and then put cones to block off the covered canopy and only have it open for when the spare bus comes in. That will eliminate the problem.
And if it doesn't correct it, they have to do like all the, the, the three schools. Drop off in the front, buses in the back. And have a, 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 because everywhere else X is working. They bottlenecking the whole community. You know, it's just something to throw at, but they have to be out there physically being aggressive and telling them, move up, move up. Because if not, it's a, it's a traffic jam, I'm telling you. It was Baton Rouge all over.
Next, uh, Mr. Wilson, we have a negative session. We need to go into negative session.
Alright, well, most of the negative sessions, Ms. David. Please.
Well, most of the ones that are session, Ms. David, please.
Get your chair.